Roll call, please.
Here.
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 I'm here twice.
Both of you.
Yeah.
We have a quorum. First item on the agenda this morning is a discussion of the capital improvement plan and services. We'll call on Bill Somer. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So we've talked about capital improvement planning over the last year, probably two years. If you recall, the whole strategic planning process, that comment was made several times from the public, too, of wanting to see more of the capital improvement planning, what it looks like, more of a public-facing document to that. So as staff, we've been exploring over the last few months, an option for that. And one is through AE2S, that's Advanced Engineering Services. They have engineering firms throughout Minnesota, North, South Dakota, I think Colorado, Montana, so up in this region of the country. And so they have a newer application called Optex. It is a map-based capital planning solution. So you put in all your capital improvements, it will inflate those improvements as the years go out. You'll put them in a map so that you can pull it up, and we'll look at a video here after a little bit, kind of a live document, a living document, that we'll be able to keep going for years to come. With that also, it helps to project the revenue needed. So in particular, in the utility funds. Right now, we do that, of course, on Excel spreadsheets. We go out 10 years, we project out the improvements and the revenues that would be needed to pay for those capital improvements. But this puts it more even a living document that, you know, all of you could access, as well as the public. And we'll have to get in to see what does that look like for that public-facing page. We'll talk with them a bit more about that. We've been working with Tyler Ackerman on this proposal, who actually used to work here years ago, too. So he's someone who is familiar with the city of Fergus Falls as well. So that's kind of a little added benefit of someone that knows how our system works. So we want to know, are you interested in city staff going this route and contracting with Optex for that? Now, the initial cost is $30,000, and then it's an ongoing hosting fee of $1,500. Right now, that ongoing fee is about what we pay now for our planet system. You've seen that attached to the budget, that last section, that capital planning document. But as you could see in their proposal for different stages of this, helping us get that implemented, get everything entered, put on the maps. Certainly, we could contract with them in the future as well if we wanted for tweaks or whatnot. But the goal would be that city staff would take care of that going forward. We'd like to keep the cost to a minimum if possible. This does mean a lot of work for engineering and finance as well, because, of course, we have to have good numbers going in and then maintaining it in the future as well. So Brian and I are well aware, this means a lot of work for us, too. But it is good work. And we've heard, you know, we want to do a better job on capital planning. Time is really a factor. We struggle finding that extra time. I know personally, we kind of do the budget or the audit season during the winter rolling towards June, and then we crank up with the budget in May and do that the rest of the year as well. So I do recommend we go this route. This looks like a good option. The demo we looked at was for the city of Fargo. AE2S has been working, implementing, and building that system for City of Fargo, and really liked what we saw there. Lynn, you have a video pulled up from their website, and I believe this would be the same one if you do that QR code in their memo that's attached. So you could review this again later, but let's take a little glance at this.
AE2S Optics. Infrastructure master plans have been in the Stone Age for far too long. It's time to leave the static spreadsheets and shelves full of binders behind and move to a modern, innovative, and digital capital improvement planning solution that brings valuable information to your fingertips and can adapt as conditions change. Optics is a versatile capital planning tool that provides a dynamic, easy-to-use visualization of cities' planned projects. This powerful program adds functionality, convenience, and overall value to the services that we provide our clients. Optics provides a map-based visual of a city's planned projects, which can be filtered based on project type, status, and timeframe. Optics comes with a variety of financial planning tools that enable the tracking of funding and costs for each project. The project financial portal provides a wide array of options that can be tailored to suit any project. The easy-to-use interface allows users to view a breakdown of multi-year projects, variable funding packages, detailed amortization schedules, and more. Once your projects are updated, you can view overall capital needs by the utility and look at long-term revenue requirements by overlaying existing debt and financial obligations of the city. Optics can easily be adapted to help with citywide capital planning. In this example, you can see how the tool could be utilized for all city departments and then can be used to keep your overall finances on track. Some additional features of Optics include the ability to easily import and export data, including multi-year CIPs, export individual project financial reports, track and update future project capital costs, integrate existing financial obligations to capture a complete financial outlook, model multiple city funds, and project future financial conditions. Optics gives you access to all of your project planning data in one convenient location and makes your CIP a living document you can use on a daily basis.
So that's just a little snapshot of what that looks like. Again, the funding source for this, what we'd be proposing would be allocating that over our utility funds, you know, the refuse fund, water, sewer, storm, the equipment fund for our capital planning, and then also our permanent improvement revolving fund, because that's our street fund, where we do a lot of our street projects, although certainly would fall in here. So wondering if you, as a council, are interested in this at this time and would like to see us go this route?
Thanks, Bill. Question for it. Is this strictly internal? Are there any public-facing components of the program, or is it strictly for internal use?
I believe we can make this public-facing as well. Brian, do you recall, I'm trying, this was two or three months ago when we did the demo, and Clara asked that last night, how does this mesh with our GIS? So I sent an email off quick at the end of the day yesterday. I'll try to find that information before Monday, before we come to council, because obviously, we want public-facing data. I mean, I'm well aware of that.
Yeah, sounds good. Other questions? Anything we can do to streamline that plan? We have had, as you mentioned, discussions about the capital improvement plan and making that relevant and timely.
I had a couple of questions. Obviously, Fargo is using it. Where would we be serviced out of, you know?
This would be hosted online, basically. The person that we'd be working with would be Tyler Ackerman, who is local here to the Fergus area.
Right. And then what about ongoing costs?
$1,500 a year is the ongoing annual fee, which initially, when we looked at that, it's like, well, that's what we're paying now, and this is a much better product. It's the building out of it that is the more costly part. But ongoing is $1,500.
And how, is it like Excel-based, or is it, I mean, obviously, is it Windows, or?
You know?
I just want to know if it's, how different a program is it from an integration of like, to our accounting software and any other software we have?
Yeah, it's not going to integrate with our accounting software. All this data will be entered manually into that separately. You know, it's more like a database. It certainly works like Excel behind there, because you're putting in projects, you're putting in years, you're putting in inflation factors, and then it builds out the amortizations of those projects and the, you know, anticipated debt that would be related.
Right.
Yeah. I neglected to tell you about the timeframe. Looking at starting this, you know, we could start it around the beginning of August and have it completed before the end of the year would be the plan.
Al?
Bill, just a question. Is there any cities that use this that is the size of Fergus and not Fargo?
I'll find out.
Because that would be kind of interesting to see and research that a little bit to see what their feelings are.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Scott?
I just think that it would be good for us as a council, if this is in place, instead of trying to wait to get a hold of Brian, or get a hold of Bill, or we can just go on that sheet, or go in there and say, okay, somebody asked you a question about what the project is, is going to be asked, I don't remember, I'll look it up, right then and there. Or you can get back to on your own, without going through the staff. So I think it's a good idea. I know it's 30 grand in the beginning, but you can spread it out throughout a bunch of departments. It probably won't be too effective to everything. So I'm kind of in favor of it. I want to research this more.
Yeah, I certainly think, I would think if Bill and Brian are recommending it, I'd take their recommendation, especially when you think about $30,000 is a lot of money. But in the scheme of a couple of major projects, it's really not if we can, you know, make sure that we have the information necessary to plan for those projects. Yeah. Scott?
A couple of things. I think if it's accessible from the public, like from a website where they can go in and see, when is my street, or when is this street going to get worked on, and it's more about the timing, that they can pull it up and be able to find that kind of information out, then I think it'd be very useful. It'd be the kind of thing that I think we've been wanting to get to, to be able to answer people's questions. As far as things like streets, that seems to be almost the first thing people would be expecting. What about things like fire trucks, or police cars, things like that? Are they, would they be in here, too?
I would look at putting all our equipment in this schedule as well. So streets, water lines, sewer lines.
Garbage trucks, snow blowers.
Yep, garbage trucks, fire trucks, police vehicles, dozers, snowplows, all those major things that the city needs to spend money on to project that out. And, you know, what does that look like? And what are the revenue requirements to support that level of replacements and capital?
Someone like to make a motion that we bring this for discussion to the council on Monday night?
I'll do that, Sean. I'll second it.
Thanks, Scott. Any further questions of Bill? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Bill. Next item on the agenda is Public Improvement 9767, Downtown Riverfront Phase Two Improvement Project. Brian Uvaro. Good morning, Brian.
Good evening. Good afternoon. Good morning.
It's been a long day.
And good night.
That's correct. Memo written before you as regards to Public Improvement 9767. This is Downtown Riverfront Improvement Project Phase Two, currently in progress here, just located to the north. Representatives Grant Cooper's here. I'm going to, we want to have him here to take, walk you through some of the associated items with Change Order Number Two. Just want to note, I have Change Order One. However, this will be work on of associated with Change Number Two. Please, I review, I recommend we approve it. We do have sufficient budget to continue with this requested action. I just want to know on Change Order One, recall that was to correct an erroneous unit price bid item that we did, just following the bits. That was done administratively. That was, maybe give one more detail, but the contractor had erroneous bid item units. We corrected it. That was actually into the benefit to the city. So at this time, I'll just turn it over to Grant right now to walk you through what this consists of.
Thanks, Brian. Good morning, Grant.
Thank you, Brian. Good morning, Mayor, Council. My name's Grant Cooper. I'm a project manager with Fulton Menk, and going to give you a brief update on construction progress so far, and then dive into some of the change order items that Brian talked about. And so been a while since we've been here for an update, but so far, progress is moving forward. They've done the private utility relocations, and they've done some removals and excavation, as you can see. And now they're working on putting in, drilling in piles. And so those piles will support the structural components of the project, the splash pad, the retaining walls, restroom structure, things of that nature. And so they're putting those in right now. In the coming weeks, they'll be putting foundations on top of those piles, and then doing some utility work as well. And so that's kind of upcoming. Like I said, it doesn't look like a ton's going on, but they're doing a lot of work underground right now. I'll jump to this memo that's in your guys' packet that addresses the Change Order Two items, which is the courthouse sidewalk addition, the multi-level water feature and limestone block seat wall revision, and a donor plaque addition. Lynn has up here on the overhead right now, the federal courthouse sidewalk addition. And so the federal courthouse is directly east of the project area, and it was brought to our attention that the only ADA accessible door for the federal courthouse was the southwest corner of the building, which is directly adjacent to our project. And so original design did not account for this ADA access location. We added an designed sidewalk on the east side of the project area, right along the side of the courthouse. And so that directly connects to that location. It also adds a direct route from the alleyway to the Phase Two project as well. And so that serves if folks or kids from Otter Cove want to travel to the project area, or senior citizens center, other businesses, it adds a level of safety as well, adding that direct route. And so you can see here, I kind of highlighted there, that's where the sidewalk addition would be on the east side of the project area. The next component of this change order is the multi-level water feature and limestone block seat wall revision. As part of the final design process, which we completed in August 22 prior to, we have to submit several applications for permits to regulatory agencies for review. One of the reviewing agencies was the Minnesota Department of Health. They regulate the pool code, which the splash pad is considered a pool, so they reviewed it for that nature. The review came back favorable, but the Minnesota Department of Health did not approve the use of limestone in direct contact with splash pad water. So as you guys know, the splash pad is a recirculating system. We went this route to minimize the amount of water that would be used. And so we recirculate that water consistently, so it minimizes the amount of water used throughout the system. Minnesota Department of Health recently had an issue with limestone adversely impacting the chemical makeup of the water. And so it would impact that. And so they're currently in process of revising their code to ban soft stone, which limestone is considered a soft stone, having direct contact with the water. And so this new requirement was, although not a part of the code yet, was required to be implemented with our project. And so this specifically addresses two areas. Could you go to the next figure? There's two areas that it affects, and you can see that multi-level water feature, as well as kind of the center area, the limestone block seat wall. And so the change for the multi-level water feature is changing to concrete construction, which is an approved material with a form liner. And so that form liner mimics the look of limestone. And so it'll have the same step down that was originally, but it's just a material change to comply with the Department of Health. Although, and so the second area, that center area, the limestone block seat wall, which is on the north side of the splash pad, south side of the Center Plaza, is, although it's not in direct contact with the system water, due to the proximity of the plat and potential for overspray, we saw it necessary to change that material as well. There's also been some concerns that splash pad users would attempt to access a splash pad by climbing down the seat wall rather than use a stairway, which is by the bathroom. And so this would also alleviate those concerns. And so our redesign of this area consisted of changing that limestone block seat wall to a center stairway. So you can see there's a center stairway with a kind of a area for some plantings as well in the middle. And so it'd be two stairways leading down to the splash pad there. The final portion of Change Order Two would be a donor plaque addition. I'm sure you guys are aware that there's been a significant amount of funding from the Roger Dell Trust and Frank Vaden Trust. The original project scope only included one donor plaque. And so at the direction of the project management team, they saw it fit to incorporate two so that both trusts would be honored for their generous donations. In your package as well, that talks through some costs, the federal courthouse sidewalk addition was actually a decrease of $400. The multi-level water feature revision was an increase of $1,070. The limestone block seat wall revision was an increase of $55,926. And the donor plaque addition was an increase of $15,400. So the total would be, of these items, would be an increase of $71,994.11. And we worked with Comshock, we reviewed their pricing, and given the current climate and work required for the changes, we saw that as reasonable pricing for those items. I'll open it up to any questions you guys might have.
Questions from the council? Al?
I have a question as far as what does the limestone do to the water? What did the Public Health Department say about that?
It, so what it does, it, again, affects the chemical makeup. And then I think my understanding is that it, so the splash pad, the system will consistently kind of look at the water and then add chemicals as needed. And so it's an automatic system that would do that. With this limestone, it would affect the chemical, where it would kind of throw that into haywire, and it would be adding chemicals at a rate that it shouldn't be adding them, is my understanding. I can look into that more. I don't have a, that's the information that I have.
I guess what I was getting at, if it was toxic or something like that, if that's what the reasoning was, or?
I'm not exactly sure, but it affects it enough to where obviously, the Department of Health was concerned about it. But I can look into that.
I'm just curious. Yeah.
Other questions for Grant? Someone like to make a motion?
I've got a question. I hate change orders, so let's get that out there. Just, but I think it would be good, maybe for Monday night, if we could get an update as to, you know, where we're actually at and the spend. And, you know, are we on schedule? Are we not on schedule? Because obviously, if we're behind, then there's catch-up to be done, and usually, catch-up costs money. And so I think, and then where we're at in terms of obviously, the private fundraising, you know, yeah, we're looking at putting $15,500 into a plaque. But, you know, is that enough? You know, because obviously, there's more than one donor. How are we going to pay for other donors? So when other things come along? You know, obviously, yesterday, there's enough money in the contingency, but this is $72,000, and it's gone. And once we spend it, it's gone. So I think, it's always frustrating that we're making a change order for like the seat wall revision, you know, that is $56,000. You know, why didn't we see that or get that out there in the beginning, you know, rather than doing it now? The limestone block, obviously, theoretically, we probably would have been nice to have known that, but obviously, MDH reviewed it, so I can kind of somewhat accept that one. But the walls at $56,000 seems a lot of money to change something that we should have had in the design in the first place.
Thanks, Anthony.
As I say, I don't like change orders. Change orders usually cost a lot of money.
You've got a motion to bring this to the council on Monday. Someone like to second that? Thanks, Brent. Other questions? I didn't need you to catch up.
No, that's fine. I've finished.
Okay, so you have a motion. Second, other questions for Grant? We have some discussion items for Monday night as part of this, too. All in favor of that motion to bring this to the council Monday night, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Grant. Next item on the agenda is discussion of a grant acceptance, and we'll call on our community development manager, Clara Beck. Good morning, Clara.
Good morning, Mayor and Council members. I'm giving you money this morning. Well, sort of. It's going toward a very specific project. But as you are aware, the city of Fergus Falls was chosen to be part of the Rural Child Care Innovation Program. Back in the fall of 2022, we've been working through that program and will continue to do so until April of 2024. Since we are part of the RCCIP, that gives us the opportunity to apply for certain grants through First Children's Finance, who is the organization that is leading us through this process. And we've been offered $10,000 to help with a project here in town in partnership with Pioneer Care, who has really taken an active leadership role in the community by turning one of their facilities into a childcare facility. So they offer childcare currently through a program called Pioneer Kids to their staff members. And then when they have openings, they open that up to the community. That program is going very well. They would like to make it a permanent part of their programming. But eventually, they would like to turn the building that they're using back into long-term care. So the project now is to build a separate facility that they can then use for Pioneer Kids. And the idea was brought up with Pioneer Care, and then also through our RCCIP group, to craft it in such a way that it could be a scalable model that other businesses or entities, if they're interested in investing in childcare solutions, could then take and implement on their own land. So this initial project would take place at Pioneer Care, but where the city would be coming in with this grant funding would be to help develop the actual plans for the scalable building models. So there wouldn't be a tangible building attached to this $10,000, but it would be the plan sets, and it would be legal documents that go along with offering childcare in a pod-based model solution. So the ask of you this morning is to send this on to council on Monday to accept the $10,000 grants from First Children's Finance for use on this project with Pioneer Care. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks. Clara? Scott, would you like to offer that and then ask a question?
I would.
All right, thanks for that. Motion, someone like to say?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Jim. Go ahead, Scott.
The $10,000 is then paid to the city, or to Pioneer Care, or how are we in this?
City would be the recipient of the money, which would then be going toward, well, we would pay it out directly to the groups that are doing the work. So in this case, the model home that's being used would be going toward a group called Dynamic Homes. So we would pay those invoices as they would come in.
So is this for one facility, or is it for?
Please, go ahead.
A larger facility that each, that would be, well, the reason I'm asking is, when I went to Duluth, they had the thing with the pod program also. And I know the city of Little Falls ended up trying to get a grant, which they finally got from the state of Minnesota for 1.3 million, and ended up costing them a little bit more. But they were building one facility that would have a centralized kitchen and a centralized bathroom, but it would be divided off so individual people could run daycare facilities, sharing it. Is this similar to that?
It's a very similar model, but it would be separate buildings. Lynn, can you scroll down to the layout? So in this case, what it would be, would be essentially like single-family home style. So it would be home-based care that would be in these options. And you could have, the model that we'd be laying out would be three or four of those single-family homes on one site with a shared green space.
Okay.
Anthony, did you have a question?
I was, was, what is, or is there a city match to this involved, other than time?
There's no match involvement.
And just to point out, this group already sent us the check. It already arrived here. So we already have the cash, which that doesn't always happen. Usually, you got to wait and get reimbursed. So they upfronted the costs, so.
All right, thanks. Thanks.
Just out of curiosity, for the Pioneer Kids, what's their enrollment been?
Um, they have, I believe, space for up to 12, and I think they're usually sitting between like nine to 11 kids. They also do something that's kind of unique, but it works really well for healthcare agents, that they do allow some of their employees to share slots. So like if one employee is on for a certain number of days, and then off for a certain number of days, there's another employee that steps in and takes like the rest of that time. So they're splitting slots, which is really good flexibility.
Perfect.
So this would be more designed for individual businesses to have these other buildings?
Yeah, potentially. So the idea would be that Pioneer Care would start with one, because they've got their single program that's going. And then should they expand, they'd have space. But then the option would be open for this initial pod model for other businesses to maybe help purchase a building, pay for the building itself, and then bring in their own provider.
Any other questions for Clara? There's a motion to bring this for consideration on Monday night. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Clara. There are no additional items that I'm aware of. Andrew, Lynn, any announcements?
Just shop, move, and groove tomorrow.
Shop, move, and groove tomorrow night, downtown Fergus Falls. Be there or be square, right? Anything else to come before the council? We're adjourned. Anything else to come before the council? We're adjourned.